It's right outside the door. Alright, is everything out in the queue? Alright, go ahead and walk through. Alright, if everything's out in the queue? Alright, if everything's out in the queue? Go ahead and walk through. Alright, sir, if everything's out in the queue, go ahead and walk through.
I should look familiar by now, we started coming. Thank you. Oops, here I am, all my layers here. All for a little tiny piece of paper over there.
Music's over already?
Second.
The music's done? It's pretty fast.
It was. The black t-shirt?
Yeah. If he's gonna approach somebody with a black shirt, looking at somebody. I'm gonna go out here and cover this.
Can I take your bag real quick?
Oh, I just went through some training.
No suit today?
Huh?
No suit today?
Suit?
Yeah, you were here yesterday, right?
Yeah, I know, oh, the lawsuit, you mean. I thought you meant like wearing it somewhere. I haven't worn a suit since last time I went to church.
Oh, I look like you're wearing a suit, I don't know.
No, I was just dressed up with the slack pants.
I got you.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that was a lawsuit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that was the APD lying under oath. I love that stuff. Yeah. I can include you. It's just quiet. So they found some guy with a flash badge out there? Yeah, so security came and said he didn't have credentials. So they're looking for somebody for like, you know, trying to play cop or something. Like the APD is like walking off, get shit. And Barry, Barry's up.
Oh, Barry.
So the Assistant Chief M.C. that was standing there, that's the one I've been posed for like, six hours yesterday.
Okay.
He was the one lying. And security just asked me, you no suit today? Because I was wearing slacks yesterday? I wouldn't wear no slacks. And he's like, no suit today? I'm like, you mean lawsuit or? And he's like, I thought you were in a suit. I'm like, no, I just wore a slacks. That was actually me suing the city.
Yeah.
He's like, oh, oh, like, they think I'm not real.
Yeah.
Everyone thinks I'm not real. That's cool. I'm ether. I think Mayor Watson's not real.
Yeah, he's not there. Mayor Watson.
So they just checked my bag twice.
Oh, they did? Yeah, I told them, I told, he had to check mine.
They checked me and then I stood there and filmed for a second and they checked me. I didn't go nowhere, I stayed right there and they checked me again.
They checked you again.
But they're kissing my ass now. Things have changed. Now that they know that I'm up there. Getting paid.
Mayor Watson.
Mayor Watson. So where's the cans?
I told him, I just checked my bag when I got in.
I told him too. I told him, I sent my, so I'm sending my livestream through this checkpoint now.
Okay.
I'm not sure if illegal, but, you know, whatever. I'm just sending my whole livestream through checkpoints. I want people to see what checkpoints look like and like what we have to go through just to come in and be at City Hall. Because in a lot of cities, you don't have all those.
Oh, yeah.
You alright, man? You alright?
I'm alright.
There was someone looking for someone with a black shirt earlier, I don't know who it was.
Not you, hopefully not me.
Yeah, well, you know how they do.
The cops gonna get you.
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
They gonna arrest you.
Where's all those cans at? Where they can?
They're out there, over there.
They came in.
I think they're over there.
Where their security guard been?
That's what I was saying, they can't bring those security guards aside, they're probably not.
They can't? Yeah, they probably can't, yeah. But it says commissioned police officer.
Meaning like private police officer, like paid, like a formal police officer who's been paid on like to do a separate job.
How come we don't have security? It's like, well, how come they're the only people, I don't know what the hell. There's only, at one point, there's three security guards and two people.
You said they didn't have credentials, rather?
I mean.
That was something different.
Oh, something different.
Yeah. They're looking for some rando coming in here with a jump flash and a badge. But those guys say on their back it says commissioned police. So that means they're T-close certified, that they can carry a gun anywhere.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, almost, they can't take it in a jail. But I think they can bring a gun in here.
Can they come in here?
I mean, they're police.
They can.
They're higher than these guys, than these security. Who's that? Is that Natasha Harper Madison?
She's by Ryan, she's sitting down next to Ryan.
No, that's Natasha, who's that?
Coming out of that room.
What are they eating for lunch today is what I want to know, I'm hungry. There's Barry, Barry's watching us, watching our ass. Yeah, should I hug him or not?
You see Vanessa on the video on the webcam, or the, is that to them?
Well, look, there's a Nazi on the council. There's a Nazi on the dais. Please do not mention Nazis on the dais. They got new rules, you see that? Rules thing, and they're taking people's like.
Good afternoon, everybody, it's 1:10 PM on Thursday, May 2nd, and I will call the Austin City Council back to order for this regular meeting of the Austin Council. We have a former of the City Council present and we are still meeting in the City Council Chamber, at City Hall, 301, West Second Street, in Austin, Texas. With that, we will go back to the consent agenda and we are, when we moved on to a time certain item, we were talking, listening to public comments, so I will turn to the city clerk and ask again that you help us navigate our way through the public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several speakers from 64, they're each to get three minutes. I'll call several names in a row, when you hear your name, please come down to the front and then state your name into the podium. Alex Stringer, Jill Ferris, Joaquin Evans.
If your name's been called, please come forward out of respect for the people who will be speaking after you, so we can get to their testimony as well, so. And if the microphone is empty, even if your name is not the first one called, feel free to step into the microphone, but just say your name as you begin your speaking. And please. Specifically within.
64, because the state is trying to erase my identity as a female. And just like my comrades in Palestine, I am also a victim of genocide. I'm a beautiful trans woman, and the state is trying to invalidate my existence because Greg Abbott is an actual Nazi, who even had the nerve to say that women like me should not be allowed to teach children in A.I.S.D. I am a drag queen and a trans cessaver, and I am just as much a threat to teach kindergarten as anybody else, correct? Because I'm a role model for children, and more people should grow up to be just like me, okay? And then we've been brainwashed by patriarchy, because this is what patriarchy looks like! Sorry, not my period. Anyway, I am just a woman.
You rarely come down here to provide anything serious.
I am serious, my identity is being threatened by fascism, and I would like to speak because my identity as a woman is just as valid, okay, thank you. And I'm just a woman, as every single female on this council, and you need to recognize it. And honestly, after this outrage against me, Kirk, I would feel safe moving to the gods of strength. Because Texas is a fascist hellscape, and at least Hamas would make me feel safe and accepted because they are freedom fighters. And besides, they can hold the best rooftop parties for people like me. Thank you. Free Palestine!
Are you done?
I am done now.
Great.
I am done, but I will not be forgotten, and I will not be erased.
Quit acting like a child.
I am a woman!
Jill, Jill Ferris, Joaquin Evans, Bridget Bandit. Please come on the podium.
Thank you.
And please just state your name.
Hi, Joaquin Evans, good afternoon, council members, fair. My wife and I pastor a church in southeast Austin District 2, 800 congregants. So I represent the voice of many, not just myself, but I'm in the opposition of Agenda Item 64. I do believe that there is a moral issue, an agenda here, but I'm not here to shout that at this time. I'd love to have civil discourse with anyone who would like to have that conversation with me, but I do believe that there is a civil and legal issue at play as well. And I believe that our social conscience of how we protect our children is the real issue here.
Today?
And why I believe that adults have the right to make their own decisions, we have the responsibility to protect our children. We've always had legal precedents in place to protect children, and like others have said, you have to be 18 to vote the whole public office, even to get a tattoo or simply a body piercing. And while parental consent can change some of that on a minor level, it doesn't change the ability to vote, to drink alcohol, or hold public office. And these laws are in place because we recognize that minors are not in a place to have potentially life-altering decisions placed on their shoulders. And we protect them as a society as we should, and it's our place to do so. Again, as adults can make their own decisions, it's our responsibility to protect children. And I would ask that we would consider that when we make these decisions moving forward. Again, I have genuine love for all people, but minors should not be placed with a responsibility as people have testified here today, not everyone who undergoes gender transition treatment or alterations are satisfied with their treatment, or ultimately happy with that decision, as again, has been testified here today. And if that is the case, then we should do everything we can to protect minors in their most vulnerable and formative states. Adults can do whatever they want, but minors should not have that decision levied upon them. And so I thank you for considering that, and I pray for all of you for clarity as you make your decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Howdy, y'all. My name is Bridget Bandit, and I'm speaking in support of Item 64. I am a local drag performer, non-binary person, and lifelong Texan and Austinite. I lived in the District 6 area for over 30 years of my life. The past year has been the most challenging year to be openly queer here in my hometown, especially as a drag queen due to the misinformation spread by far-right hate groups, which we've already heard a lot of in this meeting today. We see the effects of their blatant lies and deceit in our state government, which has led to the need for this measure we have before us to help protect our local trans community. Gender-affirming healthcare is life-saving. Access to healthcare is a basic human right. We have a duty to protect our most marginalized communities. Trans kids deserve to grow into healthy adults. Trans people need to be supported by their community and government and healthcare systems. We should trust scientists, doctors, and parents to make the correct healthcare decisions for our youth. And we have the responsibility to combat the increasing hateful attacks of our LGBTQIA+ community. The state of Texas may let us down, but I will leave in our local community and the city of Austin to take the opportunity to pave the way in leading Texas into a more progressive, inclusive future for all. Thank you all.
Ashley Wilson, Ann Elder, Maddie Watkins. If your name's been called, please come on down towards the front. And then just state your name into the. Go ahead, Ben.
Just state your name for the record, and please go ahead.
My name is Ann Elder, and I am in favor of 64. I am here to support my son. I have a transgender son, and although we live in Friendswood, Texas, he is going to be attending University of Texas this coming fall. He and several of his friends who are also transgender or non-binary will be attending UT. Since my child came out when he was seven years old, I have been to the Capitol every single legislative year, multiple times, to speak up against the anti-LGBT legislation that's been proposed. And it has been a hard journey. It has stressed me, my family, my son, and we are just trying to get by and be a supportive parent. So what I am here to do is to ask you to please pass Resolution 64, and so that Austin can stay weird and not become cruel. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Maddie Watkins, and I'm here to speak against Prop 64. I was born and raised in Austin, and while growing up here, from the moment I started puberty, I felt the weight of male entitlement to my body. Boys and grown men believed they had the right to see,触摸, and touch my body as they would, that the world around me reacted to my body. I had a desperate need to try and control that reaction. I resorted to biting my chest, cutting my hair, wearing male clothes, taking on a male name, and even considered drastic surgical measures, all to evade the relentless scrutiny and expectations of men. I was, I was, it was a desperate attempt to reclaim agency in a world that based my worth on my appearance and compliance. When I experienced what is now known as gender dysphoria, the concept was not part of the adolescent zeitgeist. By the time it had become popular, I was a mother breastfeeding a newborn, and those fears and hatred of my body were the furthest from my mind. It takes time to realize the problem isn't you, that it isn't your body. What I was feeling in my teens was a reaction to my observations. Being female felt limiting, and so, and I'm so uncomfortable with male attention. To me, the simplest explanation was that my body was the problem, that my body was in the way. Holding my firstborn son taught me that my body is pretty amazing. This prop tells young kids that their distress in their observation of gender roles is a medical condition, that you are telling them that their reactionary emotions to a world that they are just starting to see defines them. When these kids wake up in their mid-20s with regrets and realize I was just a kid, will they find your name along the list of people who put them on and reinforced this path? When a woman who removed her breasts before she could even imagine having children finds herself holding a newborn to her chest unable to feed or even trying to feed them, will you feel that pain? Who pays the price when you look away? We know de-transitioner lawsuits have begun around the world. Who will pay when these children hold the city liable for not providing its citizens equal protection relative to law? You or the citizens of Austin? Overwhelmingly, the natural course of gender dysphoria in adolescents is desistance. They grow up blind context and resilience. I did, and I'm so grateful that I had the time to realize that I love being a woman and mother. In closing, I would ask that everyone please Google the CAS report, which was recently released in the UK, who are now completely welcoming back the practice of medical transition for children, having found that there is no evidence based to support its safety or efficacy. When everyone else is pulling back on practices that permanently harm kids, does the city of Austin really want to double down? Fix your roads, thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Ferris, Ashley Wilson, Chloe Wilkinson. Denise Seibert, Jessica Cohen.
Good evening, council, my name is Chloe Wilkinson. There's been a lot of talk today on Item 64 about what religion dictates is appropriate for us. But I would like to make a different case, a different lens through which we can view the religious thought. I'm a trans person, but I am also Jewish, and I'm proud of my religion. I believe that my religion teaches me that I was built in God's image, and that transness is a part of my divine spark. Like Leah Child-Dana, who she prayed for to be a girl so that her sister Rachel could have a second toy. It is an image of transness that exists within the Abrahamic religions. And I believe wholeheartedly that we are not flawed humans, so that transness is a part of God's plan. It is a divine spark, just like anyone else's. And the uniqueness is an embodiment of the beauty of God. So I ask you to please vote yes on this, and I really, really am praying that this is a unanimous vote yes, because I think that this is the right thing to do. I think that we should care for our fellow human, because we too were one strangers in a foreign land. Thank you.
My name is Denise Seibert. I am against Item Number 64. I am thankful for the freedom to be heard today, because what all of you do here today affects where I live. You all think you can get away with the breaking of law by not upholding the law. That affects all Texans, because now all can pick what laws they follow or don't follow. I call that lawlessness. And nobody is above following the law, nobody. Especially choosing not to protect minors from irreversible physical damage to their bodies. SB 14, do no harm, stop the gender agenda. Here are some of the highlights of the bill. Protects a child, an individual who's younger than 18 years of age. It prohibits provision of gender transitioning or gender reassignment procedures and treatments to certain children by not performing a surgery that sterilizes the child or provides any prescription drugs that induce transient or permanent infertility, such as puberty suppression or blocking prescription drugs to stop the delay of normal puberty. God created us, male and female. You can't change your DNA. Remember all of COVID? We were told to follow the science? DNA is science. Sex is immutable, not changeable. Immutable in the dictionary says unchanging over time and unable to be changed. These drugs and unnecessary surgeries mutilate and may permanently damage or alter a child's normal puberty or body development, and have irreversible effects on that child for their life and health and development physically. This is called child abuse. A child's mind cannot comprehend the lifelong damage transitioning has on them. Genesis 1:27, "And God created man in his image; in the image of God he created him; male and female he created them." We cannot recreate our sex through surgeries or drugs. Transitioning is the lie you tell the children. I advocate to protect the children. These procedures on a child are devastating for life. Do no harm. Uphold SB 14, stop the gender agenda. I'm against the resolution concerning the use of city resources for regulation of gender-related healthcare. You're making life choices, not just lifestyle choices, but quality of life choices for children.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jessica Cohen, Morgan Davis, Leonardo Garcia.
If your name's been called, please come down, and if there's no one at the podium, feel free to step up to the podium. Just state your name for the record, and you can begin.
Sir, yes, sir. My name is Morgan Davis. I have the honor of knowing you, many of you, as my friend. Councilwoman Paul, thank you so much for nominating me in the Human Rights Commission, the very commission that voted. Please forgive my nervous. My story goes back to, I was an investigator for Child Protective Services. I was asked to go into a home after it was Governor Abbott sent this letter about gender-affirming care. I loved my job, I loved what it did, and I took an oath to protect children. I can tell you as an investigator, everybody would talk to me. They'll children's, and everybody would talk to me. And they told me the same exact thing. They said, the only child abuse that would have occurred, the parent had the wherewithal to do this, and they didn't. Came forward. The investigation, we done, we booked. Talked to everybody. Even testifying. Good people lost their jobs because they could not morally continue. They said, I had one of my supervisors, 25 years experience. I asked her why she came forward, and she just had a baby. And she said someday I have to be able to look him in the face. She resigned. By the end, we lost 50% of our personnel because they could not morally continue. The same. Please excuse me. These are good parents. These are great parents. The fact that we know not a single surgery has been performed in a child taking a transition, not a single surgery. Everybody here today. Has voted. Can you imagine, golly, I can't even imagine that the Texas, the president of the Texas Board of Medicine came forward, and we called him brave. He was, because he said, this is safe. This needs to be, this is safe. I have seen it boots on the ground, golly, I don't know that I've seen it boots on the ground, what it does. This saves lives. I took an oath to protect children. Please help me keep that oath. Thank you so much for your time today.
Please read those names again.
Yes, sir. Leonardo Garcia, Debbie Lukerman, Cecilia Wood. If your name's been called, just go straight up to the podium and state your name.
If your name's been called, please just go to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Debbie Lukerman. Councilmembers, this is the word of God. God created man in his image, in the image of God he created them. Male and female he created them, Genesis 1:27. If anyone causes one of these little ones, those who believe in me to stumble, it would be better for them to have a large millstone hung around their neck and to be drowned in the depths of the sea, Matthew 18:6. See that you do not despise one of these little ones, for I tell you that their angels in heaven always see the face of my Father in heaven, Matthew 18:10. For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten Son, that whoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life. For God sent not his Son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through him might be saved. but that the world through him might be saved. He that believeth on him is not condemned, but he that believeth, he that believeth in him is not condemned, but he that believeth not is condemned already, because he hath not believed in the name of the only begotten Son of God. And this is the condemnation, that light has come into the world, and men have loved darkness rather than light, because their deeds were evil. John three sixteen through nineteen. I hope you make a righteous decision.
Thank you.
Leonardo Garcia, Cecilia Wood, Marissa Lannacome, Sarah Newman, Sparkle Williams, Danielle Skidmore.
Hello, my name is Glen Nissu Williams. It has only been my legal name since December of 2023. My original name was Glen Higbee Williams. I'm a licensed attorney since nineteen seventy-six November first. As a cisgender, presenting as a cisgender male attorney, I was a regional attorney for Child Protection Services for twenty-eight years. During that time, I saw despite the best efforts of many individuals that we are doing a terrible job taking care of trans individuals. In fact, we had two children who are both trans in the year 2017, who were in the CPS terminology, children without placement. This meant they were guarded by caseworkers in a hotel room. This is essentially solitary confinement. They were there for sixty days for no fault other than they were intrude in their agenda. In 2017, I left CPS for the purpose of running for state senate, senate district five, hoping to create a more responsive and more responsible agency by having an elected official. I failed in spectacular fashion and became a private attorney representing children and parents in CPS cases. Unfortunately, the situation has only gotten worse. The last two weeks, there was a Texas Tribune article which talked about how many children left here, trans, isolated, without family, very often without friends, often unemployable. It seems impossible to conceive, but it is the case, that this very agency in this state, which treats trans children so poorly, and no matter what you think about trans children, I think none of us wants to see people treated cruelly and inhumanly. But that same state that would treat these children so terribly would have the ability to prosecute somebody who just lent a sympathetic ear to a trans child. I strongly support proposition sixty-four. I think it is essential, it's true to Austin values. In nineteen eighty-one, there is an attempt to amend the Fair House ordinance to allow discrimination against homosexuals. The citizens of Austin rejected the arguments, and they were very, very gross. I don't need to go into them, but the cops referenced barriers and faggots and how they didn't mean to be here in Austin, they can go back to the San Francisco system. But we rose as a community and voted sixty-three to thirty-seven percent to reject that amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marissa Lannacome, Sarah Newman.
Mayor, council. My name is Danielle Skidmore. I'm a resident in District Nine, speaking in support of item sixty-four. We transgender Texans live in a state where sadly, the Republican majority at the Capitol has made it their priority to eliminate us from public life. It is literally in their party platform. The platform item states, "We oppose all efforts to validate transgender identity." Thank you for listening to actual transgender people and supporting our community, and especially transgender children. I am proud to call Austin home. Thank you for doing what is right, even when it is not easy.
Christian Aguirre, Charles Soto.
Good afternoon, Mayor Watson, and esteemed members of the Austin City Council. My name is Christian Aguirre, and I am the vice chair of the LGBTQ Quality of Life Commission at the city of Austin, and a graduate student at LBJ School of Public Affairs, and a District Two resident. Today, I stand before you in my personal capacity to express my strong support for item number sixty-four, the resolution concerning the regulation of gender-related healthcare. As an Austinite and a proud member of the LGBTQ community, I firmly believe in the importance to access an inclusive and affirming healthcare for all individuals, regardless of gender identity. Growing up queer and undocumented, I have experienced firsthand how policy or lack thereof at city, state, and federal levels can deprive our communities of access to essential resources and support. At a very young age, yes, as a child, I often contemplated suicide because of the homophobia, transphobia that existed and still exists in our communities. This resolution in front of you, co-developed with our trans community, aligns with our city's commitment to equality and inclusion, ensuring accessible and supportive healthcare services. It also sets a powerful precedent by affirming the rights of transgender and non-binary individuals to access gender-affirming care. Today, I urge you to vote in favor of item number sixty-four to send a clear message of solidarity and support to all members of the LGBTQ community. Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Stevie Benoch. I am speaking in support of item sixty-four. I am a trans woman living in District Five, and I am a parent of a bi-racial child. Being a trans mother did not make my child transgender. They are, however, something I am on, a Christian. She believes in God and in Jesus Christ. This influence did not come within my home, but I welcome it all the same. As a parent, it is my job to build my child, not in my own image, but to guide them as they discover and build themselves. It is my job to show them what it means to be a good Christian, a follower and follower of Jesus, to stand with the powerless and the persecuted, the peacemakers and the hungry. I teach her that Jesus stood for what we need here today, radical love for all people. Understand that the attempt to hypothetically protect children from gender-affirming care acknowledges the hermogenital dysphoria, but it is only a concern for children who are not transgender. They alone deserve protection from experiencing it, and that the cause of trans is a Texan. For whom dysphoria comes from within, is very real, and exists from an early age. It is up to parents, children, their physicians, and mental health professionals to determine what is appropriate. Surgeries are not happening on young children. The type of transition that we're talking about for kids is simply changing a name, clothes, and pronouns. Giving birth may also be prescribed, but they're not always desired, and they are reversible. It is not the government's place to determine individualized medical treatment, what a person wears, what a person calls themselves, or how they are allowed to relate to themselves. SB fourteen is an unjust law. It must be disregarded, and there is precedent for doing so all around us. Right now, parts of Texas, it is illegal to drink beer while standing up. It is illegal to sell certain kinds of cheeses on Sunday. You are not allowed to walk barefoot in public without a permit. Likewise, there are large portions of the Bible which we adore. We no longer sacrifice animals. We do not stone people to death. We do not sell our daughters into slavery. SB fourteen should be ignored as equally unserious and harmful, pushed dishonestly for political purposes. Making Austin a sanctuary city will save the lives of our most vulnerable citizens. It will keep together Texas's most vulnerable families. The city must uphold its legacy as a welcoming refuge to vulnerable Texans when the widespread intolerance and judgment fell elsewhere in the state. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Charles Soto. I'm speaking in favor of resolution sixty-four. I'm in District Seven. I've lived in Austin for thirty-five years. While I was born here, I am raising a family here. And I first want to thank the employees and our representatives of the city, and also really thank Travis County, particularly in support, for the support they've shown families. It's difficult enough raising a family. You know, even with, throw on top of that all of the lies and hate that are spread to some of us. You know, I bring it in my faith, my deeply held beliefs. I'm a post-farian minister, and we don't have any commandments. We have a list of things we really wish you wouldn't. And it basically boils down to try to be less of a jerk. And the ones to get him on, I would one hundred percent agree with every single word in this resolution. It uses science-based facts. And if you get offended against the resolution, we can all stand by it. I'm going to turn to address the members of our community. Well, I want to say, if you're raising families like I am, if you've been attacked by the hateful, anger, someone witcher right here in front of us, I feel you, we love you with all of our hearts, and we will defend you with everything our strength.
Stevie Benoch, Chloe Goodman, Maxine Lequeen.
Hi there. Good afternoon. My name is Chloe Goodman. I'm the constituent services manager for Quality Texas, an LSW, and I also have an administration of public affairs. And contrary to, I guess, popular belief, I'm neither religious, nor do I hate myself. And I'm not sorry for either of those things. The resolution on gender-affirming care, because queer Texans are living in a state that is trying to eradicate us by denying access to healthcare, ripping trans kids from their families, citizenship in schools, and now Abbott's proposed ban on trans people becoming teachers, and also erasure of our culture like drag. State officials now are too busy squabbling with the federal government over minimum protections for LGBTQ plus people. So frankly, local government is all we have left. This resolution is just the latest example of the city of Austin's dedication to making Austin a place where everyone can feel welcome and safe. And it is a refusal to treat LGBTQ plus Texans as political pawns, because we are in fact just people. And all indications point to rising political violence and hate crimes against our community. And because I conducted intake on three hundred and eleven anti-LGBTQ incidents across Texas in 2023. For reference, in 2022, we had an average of nine cases per month, with a spike of twenty-five cases during Pride. In 2023, we had twenty-five point nine cases per month on average, with a spike of forty-six in September, which is when children were going back to school. And I keep hearing from parents of gender expansive children who are scared because their children keep getting attacked, and no one will help. And the Toronto Project 2024 survey on mental health involved being of queer youth tells us that forty-six percent of gender expansive youth reported that their family has seriously considered leaving their home in order to escape persecution. I hear from these families all the time. Really? This resolution, do our decision your vote? This is all we have to keep people in their hometowns and keep people feeling safe. So I hope this will pass. The resolution to protect healthcare.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Maxine Lequeen. I'm a proud trans woman, local drag entertainer, and a constituent of District Six. I am here to testify in favor of proposition sixty-four. I've been hearing a lot of dissenting comments in regards to gender-affirming healthcare, specifically for trans youth. And while I am here today, I want to set a reminder that we live in a secular nation with a secular government. Religion and Bible verses should not have any impact on your decision here today. I have a very simple question to the public here with me. Who gives you the right to decide what's good for the entirety of a community that a majority of you are not even a part of? I've heard a lot of comments today speaking on how our children aren't developed enough mentally to make medical decisions that can have permanent effects. First of all, trans kids are not getting surgeries. They are not chopping off body parts or getting implants at age thirteen. With the effect of Senate Bill fourteen in Texas, I have seen so many personal friends, some of whom are parents of trans kids, having to flee this state in search of safety. Now, I hear so much about us being proud Texans, all of us here today. Yet here we are, forcing our own citizens out of the state in order to spread fear about trans to decide what is best. Let Austin be a safe haven for my community. Trans is beautiful. Vote yes on resolution sixty-four.
Hey, y'all, how's it going? My name is Jessica Cohen. Y'all probably know me. Today, I'm speaking as the vice president of the Texas Democratic Party's LGBTQ Caucus this morning. Our executive committee met, and we went to the board of directors, and we are in favor of this resolution. A trans woman, having served on city boards for five years, and proud to be part of this process. I wanted to briefly touch on a few things that I think are important to mention here. One, a lot of these folks have been talking to y'all, talking about their experiences over the past five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. Well, I'd like to tell you, I have been transformed more than that. I've been trans for thirty, and none of them know what they're talking about. My experience has shown me to the people I've met who have become transishing or who have considered transitioning, that most of the time, and I don't know if there's an actual real number to it, but at least my friends I've met, no one regrets. Here, we're often, anything else is for folks who have reached the age of twenty-five I had started sooner. That is my only regret, and I'm here to say, please, please do something now so that others don't have to have that regret as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Speckler Korgel, Texas Lamar, Perla Hopkins.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I think you've heard a lot of really compelling testimony today, and I'm certainly not a medical professional, I can't testify to that. What concerns me is the fact that it seems more and more the city of Austin is looking for creative ways to go around the law. And I think it's not the right thing to do. When you all took office, you swore that you would support the laws and the constitution of this state. You swore to it. And it doesn't mean, well, I mean, that's just kind of a cool thing. And then you go and you say, you know what? We don't like the laws. Instead of going to the state, and when I was the auditor, I didn't like some laws either, to be honest. And I went to the state and tried to get them changed. Some were changed, some were not. But I don't think you have the authority But I don't think you have the authority to do, to just decide that you don't like the laws for whatever reason. And we're seeing a real financial impact of that. There have been a number of cases where citizens have to gather money to hire lawyers to sue their government because the government is not following the law. And then furthermore, the government is charging citizens for lawyers to fight against them. This is wrong. It is against the law. And as far as I'm concerned, I mean, the basis of government are laws. Because when you take public money, you have an obligation to follow the law with the expenditure of that money. And I think this is a clever way, again, to escape the law. If you, everyone always likes to talk about the legislature and I've testified there a lot of times. And the truth of the matter is, it, many of them are tired of us. The session before last, I was testifying on an issue with two other women from Austin. And the people in front of me, turns out I'm from Austin. And we said, yeah, and they go, you know, we are so sick of you people. All you do is mess up stuff and then we have to pay money. We gotta come here and change things. That's not good. It's not good to, to not have others in the state support or look positively on Austin, which is the capital of Texas. I don't know if you saw it recently, but The Independent came out, it's a newsletter by Daryl Slusher, who was a councilperson, and there's a long list of where Austin has just broken the law. And citizens had to sue and the city was found wrong. I don't want you to keep doing that as a citizen. I want you to look at the law. I want you to obey the law, spend the money in accordance with the law. If you don't like the law, go to the legislature. So I very strongly think that you should vote no and I am against this resolution. Thank you very much.
Skyler Corgel, Texas Lamar, Pearl Hopkins, and just take your name on the podium, please.
Hello, council. My name is Skyler Corgel. I live in D1 and I speak in favor of Item 64. I think item 64 gives Austin the ability to lead where the state is not only failing, but vilifying residents in Texas. Austin has the opportunity to protect and reassure our vibrant trans community that, that healthcare and healthcare infrastructure supports them, that Austin's a place for them. Austin has for decades been known as an oasis for the queer and trans community in Texas, where we can remain close to our friends and family, the people that we love, remaining in the state that we love. Even some of us will try to make the state better. And with the passage of the agenda item, we can preserve that part of our cultural community identity. At a time when trans people are scared, their families and friends are scared for them, writers or healthcare providers are scared to provide care for them. We confidently say, this resolution to Austin is their home and will continue to protect, to protect the queer trans community. As working in the legislature and working for an Austin delegation, as part of the delegation, helping to protect Austin against the legislature, I want to thank you all so much for trying to protect Austin here and also standing up to the legislature where you can. And necessarily, we don't know what's going to happen. It's already looking good. But this is a great proactive step that the city can take to protect all the autonomy and the freedom of our citizens to get the healthcare that they deserve and be the people that they are deserved to be. So thank you, council.
Good afternoon. My name is Texas Lamar. I am speaking in support of Agenda Item 64. I am a proud member of the LGBTQ community, a proud Austinite, and obviously a proud Texan. This is my real name. I'll get right to it. The dedication of any city funds or personnel to the prosecution of trans people seeking healthcare is a garbage use of my tax dollars. Since Monday, this city has experienced an opioid outbreak, causing roughly 80 people to overdose and four people to die. This city needs to dedicate our resources to actual, real health crises like the opioid epidemic, not to criminalizing life-saving care. Please pass this resolution and protect trans Austinites and especially our trans children from the cruel politicians in the Texas legislature. Thank you.
Members of the public, we have an agenda set for a two o'clock time cert. I'm sorry, but we're so far into this. What we're going to do is go ahead and complete the consent agenda before we take up the two o'clock time cert. I just want to let people know. What we'll do is we will take that. We'll go to the two o'clock time cert, take it, and then we'll come back for the public hearings and things of that nature. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Please, it's all yours.
Good afternoon. My name is Bella Hopkins. And I am speaking to you today as a public school mom and teacher, also UT mom. And I have been Travis County resident for the past seven years. As a teacher and a parent of students in public schools, I am more than devastated by the cause that this gender ideology and putting party over children has done to our students. In July of 2022, the education commissioner, when asked if pornography was being administered to students in the way of instructional materials and if indeed they were being groomed in our public schools, the commissioner, and I want to quote, admitted to this by stating, yes, we have complaints that would appear to substantiate periodic instructional materials problems in those areas, arguably. We have reviewed in some cases materials that were made available to students that would, I think, the common citizen would agree would be inappropriate. So when you are hearing from parents in this very room, we are vouching and advocating for our children. More than 81% of all Texas lessons are being taught below grade level. And I'm here to ask you to please vote against this resolution because it was sent to me as the agenda as a whole by members of the LGBTQ community and parents of children in the LGBTQ community. I told them that I would look into it. It's very misleading. And when I see the two members at the end here chuckling and smiling about during the outbursts, it confirms to me that this has very much to do with kids. The age 25 was brought up just now. Until age 25, children can, or adults can start thinking critically, not putting their emotions behind them. Their executive functioning does not develop until age 25. So we cannot be making choices for children because those are crimes against kids. So to elaborate on the speaker that spoke remotely. We have a cultural problem here. Again, you're hearing from a parent. All the negativity can be stopped with your politics. Follow the law. Our ISVs have become a circus. This city council meetings have become a circus. Our House gallery has become a circus. Please don't add to that.
Christopher Hamilton, Lyndon Merrick, Carrie Smith.
Mayor Watson and council members, my name is Christopher Hamilton. I am a resident of District 10 and serve as chief executive officer of Texas Health Action, a community formed nonprofit dedicated to providing access to culturally affirming quality health services in a safe and supportive environment with expertise in serving LGBTQI plus people and people impacted by HIV. Texas Health Action supports proposed Resolution Number 64 regarding the use of the city's resources for the regulation of gender-related healthcare. We see firsthand the benefits and improved health outcomes of transgender and non-binary adults who access healthcare through our programs Kind Clinic and Waterloo Counseling Center. Efforts to restrict healthcare access to specific groups of people are purely and blatantly discriminatory and inconsistent with the healthcare needs of trans and non-binary Austinites. Health and access to healthcare are vital components of quality of life. As a healthcare organization with an expertise in serving LGBTQI plus people and people impacted by HIV, we support and affirm best practice medical care as fundamental to quality of life. Texas Health Action supports the city in its approach to using its limited resources to address the most pressing issues of its residents, which typically does not include preventing people from accessing or providing legally available healthcare. We are heartened by the city's commitment to LGBTQI plus people and affirming providers and hope that the city will continue to find ways to support healthcare as a basic human right.
Hello, city of Austin, and hello, city council and Mayor Kirk Watson. My name is Lyndon Mark. I reside in the city. I'm going to get a little anecdotal, that's all right. One of my closest friends is in the graduating class of 2024. He is a little brother to me. Growing up, we both struggled with mental health issues, but he had the added weight of being born in the wrong skin. He received gender-affirming care since he was nearly 17, as his mother had the right to take care of her son and supported him starting HRT treatment. The impact on his life was tangible. He had never been so comfortable in at home in his body. And it was the happiest I've ever seen him. His growth was the most beautiful thing I've had the privilege to see in my life and I'm so proud of him. In May of 2023, Senate Bill 14 passed. And in September, he lost access to the care he needed for three months before he turned 18. This may seem like a really short amount of time, but watching him lose access to the care and the doctors that he needed to take care of himself was heartbreaking. I wished at that time there was anything I could have done to stop the weight falling back on him again. I cannot begin to think about how many kids have struggled and how many parents have had to watch their kids struggle since the pass of Bill 14. Item 64 is a great step towards protecting these kids and their parents' rights to care for them once more. Thank you very much for your time.
Carrie Smith, I'm back, Sarah Cohen, and then Estee Warren, maybe Warner.
Good afternoon. My name is Carrie Smith and I live in the great state of Texas. One of the purposes of law is to protect the vulnerable among us from harm. As a society, we have always recognized that children are not developmentally the same as adults. As such, our laws do not allow children to consent to sex with adults, to drinking, to smoking, to getting a tattoo, to driving a car or buying a gun. But somehow, in the past few years, we have all collectively lost our minds and decided that children are capable of consenting to sterilizing themselves for life and to having the breasts and genitals cut off and mutilated. I encourage you to read and listen to all of the leaked WPATH files, where the very doctors who are chemically castrating and generally mutilating children are caught on video admitting that these children are not capable of understanding what they are consenting to. The president of WPATH, Marcy Bowers, is even on video admitting that 100% of little boys in Tanner Stage 2, that's around the age 11, who they've given puberty blockers to, are never able to achieve orgasm in adulthood. That's 100%. You can watch her say this on camera. Chemically castrating puberty blockers are not reversible. I encourage you to listen to the voices of the mutilated children, some of whom are here today, voices of people like Chloe Cole and Lila Jane, both who had double mastectomies when they were children, who are now in young adulthood suing the butchers who did this to them when they were kids. Every single country that has done a systematic medical review of the evidence has banned this barbarism against children. And we're going to follow in the footsteps of progressive countries like the UK, Norway, Sweden, Denmark, and Finland. And we're going to ban it in all 50 states here in the US. The Hippocratic oath for doctors says to first do no harm. It is a lie that sterilizing and mutilating children does no harm. In the words of Alexander Solzhenitsyn, "Let the lie come into the world. Let it even prosper, but not through me." I urge the Austin City Council not to be on the wrong side of history on this, the greatest medical scandal and atrocity against children in our lifetime. Let the lie come into the world. Let it even prosper, but not through Texas. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Estee Warren.
Ma'am, can I ask you to move that microphone a little closer to your mouth? There you go. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I stand before you, reminding you that as elected officials, you represent us, the citizens. Your work, you should be working for the good of us, the people. So as city council, the affairs of the city should be your main focus. The city council's business is the city affairs. Given more time, I could point out, as earlier this morning, you were reprimanded about various issues that you maybe have neglected. And I don't want to go there, but there are definitely issues that need tending to. But today, our focus is our children. And this is why I came forth today. Our children are not under your jurisdiction. This resolution you are considering is not your dog assignment. You have no authority to be acting on our children's behalf. And certainly, making our city a sanctuary city to protect those that you think you are protecting is not what it is about. Please stop politicizing this confusion that has arisen, for it certainly is a confusion. God may be chamas, male or female. No confusion there. It was pretty clear. I would like to remind City Council once again to stay out of our children's lives. Let the children be children, keeping their innocence to live as God created them for His glory. I ask you to choose wisely and carefully what you are considering. These, these children are tomorrow's leaders. They are our future. And we do not want our children living with irreparable damage, not in their bodies, not in their minds, not in their souls, and not in their spirits. I ask you once again, think wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 64, 93, Adam Powell, will be six minutes, followed by Edgar Handel, also six minutes, Adnush Razam.
Hey y'all, my name is Adam Powell, resident of District 7. And I'm here to speak in support of Item 64, the trans protection resolution. Our reasoning for this is really simple. Yeah, yeah. I'll get to 93 later, don't worry.
Okay, I just want to make sure you don't take your, because you get six minutes. But, so we need you to speak on the two items.
Yes, yes, I'll get to 93 in just a second. It'll be way less than six minutes too. But you know, my reasoning for supporting Item 64 is very simple, which is just that I love our trans community. I also recognize that they're under attack from the Texas legislature. And it's been really painful to see so many of my trans friends move, not just out of the, not just out of our city, but out of the state entirely. And many, many more trans folks I know who are considering that very same option. And I believe in an Austin that is truly welcoming, no matter what our state throws at us. And this item is that meaningful, important way to show our trans community that they are loved here. So I urge you to vote yes on Item 64. And then in regards to Items 93, I want to just quickly say I support the formation of a poet laureate program. of a poet laureate program here in Austin. It's a great, no-brainer way to support artists, the arts and culture in our community, even just the title alone can do so much for someone's career. And given that so many of our peer cities, large cities here in Texas already have that, seems like something we should just go ahead and do. So appreciate y'all's time as always.
Thank you very much.
My name is Adnush Razan, and I live in District Three. As a social worker and resident of Austin, I am committed to promoting the well-being and dignity of all individuals, and I'm here in strong support of item 64 to protect the rights of transgender youth to access gender-affirming care. Gender-affirming care is life-saving for many. By making it available, we can significantly improve transgender youth's mental health, well-being, and overall quality of life. Protecting the right of transgender youth to access gender-affirming care is a matter of human rights and social justice. We need to stand together and ensure our youth have the support and resources they need to live authentically and thrive. Thank you, Councilmember Vella and all the co-sponsors for bringing forward this item. I hope the council can assist to ensure the well-being of all residents of Austin. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Edgar Handel. I'm resident District Three and a board member of Aura. I think I should sign up for this item, or for item 73, but I wanted to mention it briefly that there's a lot of affordable housing in my neighborhood. I mean, we need more in East Austin, but you know, we have...
I didn't sign up on the item. We need you to testify when you signed up.
Okay, sorry. Oh, wait, um, well, I did sign up to speak in favor of item 64 and 94. I'll start with 94. Updating the building code to allow single-stair buildings up to at least five stories. I've lived in quite a few apartments, both as a child before my family was able to afford to buy a single-family home, as a college student entirely dependent on financial aid, and as an adult. Many, if not most of these apartments, had limited access to sunlight, sunlight, fresh air, and had the strained floor plans. Before a current home, my wife and I lived in an apartment in East Austin. Of the four walls, one was shared with the hallway, two with neighboring units, and one small side to let in light and air. This, of course, is a pretty typical layout of apartments in Austin, but it doesn't have to be this way. Single-stair apartments are easier to design with more sunlight, fresh air, and a variety of more liberal floor plans. I sometimes hear people ask why we don't have more multi-bedroom apartments fit for families, and this would make it easier to build those, too. Nearly the whole rest of the world allows these. Seattle and New York City have it, too, and many states are working on it. This is just common sense policy. It fits in really well with how we're working to curb the rise of windowless bedrooms, improve efforts to legalize multifamily housing types, and end exclusionary zoning, like the Home Initiative and the Global Transit-Oriented Development. Making sure Austinites have mobile apartments with windowed bedrooms and access to sunlight and fresh air is important, so let's make it happen. I'd also like to speak in strong support of item 64, protecting those who, protecting those providing and seeking gender-affirming care. To me, this is simple. This kind of care is potentially life-saving. We should respect the decisions and rights of those seeking care, their parents, and their care providers. I personally know some who are afraid to live or even visit Texas because of policies that work against their safety and freedom. If we wanna respect personal safety and freedom, as well as parental choice, then we should protect gender-affirming care. We've heard from a lot of people today that have more experience in mind than I do in mental health, medical care, and working with children, and there's just been so much said that I think that really should make this clear, that this is the right step. Thank you.
I think that's the speaker. I know you said you had some thoughts on item 73, and that pertains to my district. Could you send us an email so that we can have your thoughts before we take that item up? Okay, thank you.
You got a big fan club there.
For items 64 and 94, Luis Postbalugo, six minutes. Abdeck is Barbara Buckland, and then Katie Brookins.
Good morning. Wait, okay, I'm sorry. Speaker, morning. Um, Mayor, Council, I hope you all are having a wonderful day. Yeah, I'm glad to leave at still 10:00 AM for me. I am Andre Villalobos. I'm a district resident. And I'm here mainly speaking in favor of family-sized apartments and hopefully an open community here in Austin. I'll speak to 94 first, because it's rather simple. I grew up in, well, in this separate country, but as well, a working-class family, was still able to live near really high amenity neighborhoods for a third-world country, because it was a point-axis plot that was a nice three-bedroom. For what, based on math, I was able to do when you do, first is power parity, would be, the cost of it would be pulling to what a one-bedroom goes for here in Austin. Single-stair apartments, you know, from six stories like Seattle does, to eleven in Barcelona, allows families who are in a working class, who got big families, to live here in the central city and within the city limits of Austin instead of, you know, in much, much further out, like Round Rock and Hutto and other places like that. So that's a very simple one. On 64, for me, it's rather simple. My older brother is a trans man and had a very long journey, a very painful journey, to be able to get there. It was, it was very, very hard at times for them to realize, you know, who they were and what they needed, and we were very privileged and very lucky that our family was able to get the support that he needed and the support that he got, and is now going to delve medical as a doctor for their residency. Ultimately, item 64 is just about giving people a fair shot of life, and I think it's really important that we do that. So that's it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Watson and City Council. I'm Barbara Buckland, and I'm here today to speak against the 64 agenda. And I'd like to just start with a couple verses out of Scripture. It says, the word says, "For God, for God is a holy God, and He opposes people who suppress the truth by their wickedness." They know the truth also because God is a God who loves them and cares for them. And since the beginning of the world, God created people who have known the earth and the sky. They see it. They see everything that God has made. They see this clearly. They know He is an indelible qualities. He has eternal power, and He has divine nature. So what we're talking about is people that suppress the truth when they know it. And what I believe God says very clearly, which we've heard here before, that God created people, humans, beings, in His own image. In the image of God, He created them, male and female. He created them. So wisdom tells us not to suppress the truth. Wisdom would tell us to line up with the Creator of all things. He created man and woman in His image for His purposes, to reproduce and to multiply. For this reason, and for others that have been stated here, is that I'm against this agenda, and I noticed how the narrative has so changed this afternoon, particularly we're talking about adult care, where what we're talking about is actually childcare and child transformation done through surgery, blockers, hormone blockers. I ran off some copies, which we've made a copy for each of you, and this is testimony that was given in the House-Senate Committee recently. It's full of research and information that is verified, that's from doctors' associations, various experts around the world. And what they, what told the House Committee was that this was a dangerous procedure that was experimented on children, experiments on children, and that they were not advising it in any case. So it's not a matter of healthcare for adults, it's a matter of what happens to our children. And I know you care for and love the children of Austin, and hope you'll make that decision.
Thank you.
Blessings.
No, folks, we're not gonna do that.
What's good, everybody?
We're out of order. Hang on a second. We're not going to call each other names. We would be, here we are at a moment where we're asking for people to recognize that we might not all be the same, and we might come at things in a different way, and so what we're not going to do is at that sort of hearing, call people names and degrade. So we're just not gonna do that. So whoever was doing that, I ask you to please stop.
That's not part of my time, Brad.
No.
What's good? My name is Katie Brookins. I'm a writer, cultural worker, and I live in District Two. I'm here to speak in support of item 93. Since the 1600s, poet laureate positions have existed in cities, states, and countries to be stewards of poetry in their communities, through programs that positively impact, right, the general public. I'm of the belief that Austin could really benefit from a poet laureate program, and here's why. According to the Literacy Coalition of Central Texas, 121,000 adults in Central Texas either cannot read or struggle with reading. And for decades, many local organizations, bookstores, and individuals have nurtured Austin's poetry scene with little to no budget and no citywide recognition. Yet, UT Austin has one of the most nationally-recognized MFA programs, right? And yet, Austin Poetry Slam is tied with Dallas as the longest-running poetry slam in Texas. Many comparable cities, including Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, San Francisco, and Seattle, all have adult poet laureate programs, and we do not. Yet, Austin markets itself as the Mecca for arts and culture in Texas. So having a poet laureate program would simply keep Austin accountable to its promise of being that arts and culture center, and it would assist with improving Austin's unsatisfactory literacy rate. I created a petition for the Austin Poet Laureate Program, which, as of this morning, has 260-plus signatures, including all members of the Arts Commission, seven city, Texas city and state poet laureates, the president of Austin Poetry Society, and the founder of Austin Poetry Slam, which y'all will hear from today. Austin Public Library has also agreed to run the program. The only missing piece is y'all. So, thank you to Councilmember Vanessa Fuentes and all co-sponsors of this item, to you others. I implore you to support and pass this resolution and show Austin that you care about poetry, literacy, and uplifting Austin's history and culture. P.S. I'm so glad to be here on the day that item 64 is being talked about. I'm 100% in favor of that as a person who believes in science and human rights and a former trans kid who is now a thriving trans adult. Thank you.
Your name and call, please come forward and be prepared to speak, and feel free to take the microphone, just state your name and address.
Hey, everybody. My name is Mike Henry. I live in District Five, and I'm the founder of Austin Poetry Slam. I agree with you, which would create an Austin poet laureate position. Now, a great city deserves a poet laureate. This is consistent around the globe, it's consistent across the US, and most importantly, it's consistent right in Texas, as Katie pointed out. Houston has a poet laureate, San Antonio has a poet laureate, Dallas has a poet laureate. The lack of a poet laureate in Austin is just simply inconsistent with our goals of the city and with our ongoing support for the arts and for artists. I want you to know that this is not, we're not asking to create some ceremonial position where somebody just gets to put something fancy on their email signature and, you know, go to a banquet, right? This is a poet laureate, this is boots on the ground. This person will work tirelessly as an artist, as a teacher, as a mentor, as an advocate for literacy here in our city. They'll be in our schools, they'll be at our events, they'll be here for any citizen of Austin who wants to spend time with them, and they will do the job that poets have always done, and that's tell the truth and represent the people. Now, sitting here today, y'all have a lot of things to joust with and to try to understand, and you have a very diverse community to represent. We need leaders, we need scientists, we need you, we need government. I think y'all need a poet. Thank you, guys, very much. Please support me.
I think I shall never see an item as lovely as 93.
I'm Daniel Kedwin. Thank you so much for writing for and appearing in favor of that. I'll keep this extremely brief, so respect your time. Bye. Everyone else is here. I live in a apartment building that is a double-lotted corridor, and I, for some reason, I didn't take one of that much. I live in an apartment that has only north-facing windows, and it's really sad and dark, and I think that there's some really exciting, innovative things that can happen, from an update to the International Building Code and how we follow it in Austin. There's some cool projects you see on Twitter, people are sharing all the time about like a bunch of Lawrence Blue Price apartments that have windows on three sides, which is absolutely insane to think about in this city because you don't see it really at all. So I really enthusiastically support that. Another thing, I think that the fact that I'm saying good afternoon and not good morning is a problem. People are talking, taking a lot of time, and it's important that we all respect each other's time here, and this is not about item 94, but I just wanna say I hope we all can move to a point in which everybody has a amount of time that is reasonable and that we can keep these meetings within reason and to respect everybody's time, because I work with time, and I slot the morning to come to council, not all day. And so I hope you guys can move forward with that. Thank you very much.
Chris Gannon, Michael Rhodes, Connor Kenny.
Your name and call, please come forward. We're after something now.
Chris Gannon, Michael Rhodes, Connor Kenny.
Connor Kenny, I'm from Capital A. Houston. Here to speak on single-stair primarily. A lot of the reforms that y'all have approved, like mobility and parking, are gonna be great things for median and large sites. Single stairs is the secret ingredient to a small size. Capital A. really think that the starter homes and middle-class homes and affordable ownership homes, the next 50 years are actually stacked on small-scale, quiet, small streets with three-over bedrooms and windows on each side. The only way you can build this is a single stair. So it really is a critical reform for the liberal community for our middle class. So I was gonna be brief. So that is it, except to say, item 99, Aggregates, awesome, kind of no-brainer. Thank you, Councilmember Harvard Madison. Sunset Ridge, as an Austin affordable housing developer, I can't tell you how much time I've spent looking for sites in West Austin. You get a shock, take it, it could be another decade before you get another one. I'm very jealous of that site. And then finally, my wife works with a lot of families with trans kids, and the pain that they have gone through over the last couple of years as they've become subject to this political crusade is really awful. A lot of them left the state, and so gratitude for y'all sitting through some of this stuff today, and gratitude for everyone who gave her a kindness. A lot of our brothers and sisters are hurt, and anything we can do to help them out is a good thing. Thank you. Thank you.
My apologies. I have called all consent speakers.
Great, thank you very much. Members, that concludes the speakers that have sat down for public comment on the consent agenda. I want to now invite Megan Riley to come to the microphone so that she can speak to two of the items on our agenda on the consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am here to recommend that you approve a settlement payment in the amount of $194,000 to resolve the lawsuit brought by Juanita Lopez and Christina Gomez against the city of Austin. As we discussed in a recent communication from the Law Department, this lawsuit was filed as a result of an April 22nd, 2022 car wreck, where the plaintiff sustained serious injuries. In exchange for the payment, the plaintiff will execute a full and final release and will dismiss the lawsuit that's on file in Travis County District Court. Secondly, on item number 47, I recommend that you approve a settlement payment in the amount of $250,000 to resolve the lawsuit brought against the city of Austin by the Casillas family. As we discussed in a recent communication from the Law Department, this lawsuit was filed as a result of a June 30th, 2023 car accident fatality, where Ms. Casillas passed away as a result of the injuries she sustained. In exchange for this payment, the plaintiff will execute a full and final release and will dismiss the lawsuit that they brought against the city in Travis County District Court.
Thank you. Members, any questions, the council? Thank you very much, Megan Riley. Members, you've heard, no one told the consent agenda, you've heard the consent agenda. as the public comment, excuse me, related to it. Recall and remember that item number forty-nine is on the consent agenda that has been postponed. The vote on the consent agenda will be regarding the postponement of item number forty-nine. May I ask, are there any items that are on the consent agenda that any member wishes to pull? Councilmember Allison Holter.
Mayor, I don't know whether you want to pull it or allow me five minutes to get off my order. I would like to pull it for six quickly.
Yeah, um, if you agree, let's, let's have a vote on it. Let's pull them, and then what we'll do is have them come up and do the five minutes that you suggested. Is there any other items anybody wishes to pull?
Not to pull, but I wanted to speak on Austin water items as well.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to bring those up as a good poll to recruit them up. That's what happened, that's why I want to go ahead and have them pull. Any other items to be pulled? All right, then I will, uh, ask, I want to get a motion, and then when we have a motion, I will ask for comments, uh, in advance of the vote. Part of the discussion, and then we will have a vote, um, and then we will go to the full items, four, five, and six immediately before we go to our two o'clock turn circle. So on comments, I will recognize the words, Councilmember Kelly, followed by Councilmember Fuentes, and Councilmember, uh, Mayor Prokodyl.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues and especially the speakers who came before us today to speak in favor of item sixty-three. Maddie and Jennifer, who came by to bring this to my attention, which turned into a resolution. Um, today with the passage of item sixty-three, we will have taken a significant step towards recognizing and supporting one of the most overlooked groups in our community, our youth caregivers, youth caregivers' responsibilities, often sacrificing their own needs to care for aging, disabled, or health-compromised family members. This resolution that will pass today hopefully acknowledges their immense contributions and the challenges they face daily. By directing the city manager to conduct a comprehensive study related to this issue, our council will be paving the way to better understand and address their needs more comprehensively. Respectfully, Mayor, I would like to voice my opposition to resolution sixty-four. Um, I think that it really directs city personnel to once again flaunt state law by deprioritizing enforcement of certain laws, going so far as to stifle inter-agency cooperation and communication between state and local law enforcement. And this comes at a time when our police department morale is low. We struggle to retain and recruit officers. To me, this resolution sends an explicit yet confusing message to our law enforcement officers to act in conflict with state law. And I want you all to take a moment and really think about that, how, how it could broadly affect our public safety goals in the city. The state of Texas has enacted laws that, whether one agrees with them or not, have passed through the lawful and democratic process and reflect the legislative level of Texans statewide. As a whole municipal city, Austin does indeed have a significant degree of autonomy. However, as a political subdivision of the state of Texas, our autonomy should not be construed as a license to continually undermine state law. Repeated actions like this by our council not only undermine the rule of law, but also invite significant costs of litigation, which diverts valuable and limited city resources away from other critical services. I understand from our financial staff that we're even projecting a budget shortfall this year. So with that, while I empathize with those in the community experiencing certain medical issues, those matters are simply not within the powers we're granted as a city council. And while I stand firm in my opposition to this resolution, I fully support and encourage the right of every citizen or community member to express their views and advocate for what they believe in. The issues surrounding gender feminism in healthcare are deeply personal and deeply significant to everyone in this room today. They deserve robust public debate and the active participation of all interested parties at both the state and federal level. Those who are passionate, whether it's support or against it, please contact your state representatives or even run for the state legislature. While I respect the motivations behind this resolution, I believe it is fundamentally flawed in terms of legal authority and fiscal responsibility. Again, I will be voting no. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Members, I, I jumped to speakers and did not get a motion on the consent agenda. Councilmember Velazquez moves to adopt the consent agenda. It is seconded by Councilmember Cadre. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Kelly. I apologize for calling you out of order, but I appreciate your company.
Do you want me to do it again?
I thought so, yeah.
Just kidding, once was enough. I understand, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fuentes, followed by Councilmember Pro, and Councilmember Cadre.
Thank you. Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank our colleague Councilwoman Richie Vela for bringing forward item sixty-four. I think it's important that we, as local leaders, stand up and protect our community, and I appreciate all that you're doing in providing a safe community for trans and LGBTQ-plus community. Uh, colleagues, also want to take a moment to recognize KB Brookins, who is a poet and a constituent of District Two, and all the work that they did to create the proposal to bring a poet laureate program to Austin. Austin's the only major city in Texas without a poet laureate program, and since the sixteen hundreds, poet laureate, uh, programs and positions have existed in cities, states, and countries to be stewards of poetry in their communities through readings, workshops, and projects that are open to the general public. Austin will benefit from a sociopolitically engaged poet, planning to use poetry as a way to invigorate Austin's arts and culture and as a way to promote literacy across our city. This program has the support of more than two-hundred-and-sixty Austin residents and members of the arts community, and the City of Austin Library Commission are also in support. I want to take a moment to thank my co-sponsors, Councilmembers Harvard Madison, Velazquez, Cadre, and Allison Alter for their support of this resolution and, uh, for my colleagues voting for creating this program here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Prokodyl, followed by Councilmember Cadre, then Councilmember Velazquez.
Thanks, Mayor, but I'll wait until we bring the items four and five. Yes, thanks.
Fair enough. Councilmember Cadre, followed by Councilmember Velazquez, and then Councilmember Harvard Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to thank Councilwoman Vela as well for bringing forward item sixty-four. Uh, it's important, and it was something I was incredibly proud, uh, to sponsor. Uh, and I would also like to thank everyone who came up today, uh, to speak about how important this is for us to pass this item. Um, I would be remiss not to mention, uh, how incredibly touched I was, uh, by the story from Human Rights Commissioner Morgan Davis, their testimony. Just incredibly touched at their, uh, their leadership. Um, and those of you especially who bravely shared your personal stories, thank you for being here. Uh, while the state has chosen to bully our trans friends, family, and neighbors who score political points, uh, the City of Austin will not. Uh, to the trans community of Austin, our constituents, our neighbors, our friends, our family, uh, you are welcomed here, you are loved, and you, and we will do everything we can as a city to help protect you from bigotry.
Thank you, Councilmember Cadre. Followed by Harvard Madison, and then Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to thank Councilmember Vela for bringing forward item sixty-four. Uh, I am honored to be a co-sponsor and to have collaborated with his office on this resolution. This is absolutely, an absolutely necessary step in the fight against the bigotry that we're seeing in our state. Thank you to our LGBTQ-plus community for their incredibly significant input and collaboration on this item. Thank you for your continued bravery and perseverance. During this very dark time and through repeated aggressions, some of them here today, you remain light and you remain an inspiration. I am proud to be an ally and will continue to do the work needed to protect our LGBTQ-plus community and the healthcare rights of all Austinitans. It has been suggested, not once but twice today, that as a Latino, I should be ashamed for being in support of this item. Como latino, a nuestra comunidad trans, les digo, los veo, y estoy con ustedes. Gracias.
Councilmember Harvard Madison, followed by Councilmember Allison Alter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the recognition. I'm keeping brief. I wanted to laugh when my actual very first realtor, Mr. Ray Whaley, sold me my first house. Um, when he said, uh, a part of, a part of his appreciation for the ability to speak as long as it takes for our constituents to get their points across, um, was, uh, he essentially alluded to the fact that this space and time is supposed to be for y'all. We're not supposed to sit up here in the Amaranth. And that used to drive me crazy in the early days, and we were in here all day and night, and mostly it's because we talk too much. So I really do appreciate that y'all get the opportunity to, to really weigh in substantively and that we, as a community, get the opportunity to recalibrate and figure out what's most appropriate. I say all that to say the thing that I want everybody to take away from that, because it was implied that councilmembers don't want to hear you out, and I just, first of all, I categorically disagree with that, but more importantly, at, at the risk of sounding like, you know, BLSA, which I'm clearly not, we're the stars of this show. So when we get here, we're the talent. We're not the ones that y'all need to worry about, you know, when it comes to like how well we're here. Who I'm concerned about are the ones who have to run these cameras, all our audio equipment, the janitorial staff, the security guards, and we're here to do this, which it's our job. We're supposed to be here. Y'all keep us here as long as you want to. I just think it's very important that you take into consideration that as we have these conversations, there's never a time where there's a lack of complexity. A part of the complexity with having very long council meetings is that every member of our support staff, which means every single person in this building, we're the stars of the show. It don't start till we get here. Everybody else, though, they don't, they shouldn't have to be here all day and night. My hope is that as we, as a community, are looking at this, these things and, and recognizing it's not quite calibrated perfectly, but none of us have a perfectly calibrated eye. So I hope we're all taking into consideration everything that goes into us being here late. Um, and so I will stop talking there and go into, I'm super pleased to see that as we continue the conversations around I-35, again, with the complexities. I have not been a single, solid-time stranger to know where to know how or being my perspective on our highway. Um, that, that said, though, um, oftentimes, as a community, one of the things that we have to do is just know when you gotta take the L and stop pushing, because now you're just making a bunch of noise and not getting anything done. In which case, my focus is moving in the direction of connecting our community for the first time ever. East and west of I-35 will be truly connected as we're continuing these conversations. Like now we have this great trail running up to Maynor. We're looking at all these trails that are happening. Boggins, Waterloo, then, you know, over on my side, we have Walnut Creek. We are eventually going to actually be a connected city, which brings me great joy. So as we're having these conversations about the caps for I-35, I appreciate that we're moving forward there and really look forward to the insights that are going to come out of connecting Austin equit-, uh, connecting Austin equitably mobility study. Um, that's item number thirty-eight. I think this study is really going to contribute substantively to our vision around what the caps mean. In my mind's eye, the caps mean greater connectivity, greater mobility, greater accessibility, and then when you really think about it, it really means greater opportunities, both around commerce, but more importantly, connections. Um, connections don't happen just because people are in the same room, right? People have things that they, um, that they see idealized ideologically, or there are opportunities programmatically that bring people together. So my hope is that as we move through that process, that we don't assume that we get a diverse community by getting a bunch of people who have different lived experiences pushing them together. We have to be intentional about programming, and so my hope is that that's what we do with this cap and such opportunity. Additionally, item number sixty-five, regarding further exploration and implementation of community engagement initiatives, um, uh, led by the City of Austin. So this initiative that I wanted to bring forward, I'm mostly bringing forward, um, like a lot of the things that I'm bringing forward as of late, it's a long time in the making. I started having this conversation back in twenty-eighteen when I was a civilian that said, "Everything that happens at the City of Austin costs too much and takes too long." And I wasn't wrong, by the way. And so, but one of the things that I realized then, as I made the transition from civilian to policymaker, I didn't understand most of what was happening up here. And sometimes I still don't entirely understand when I have the opportunity of having direct access to our professional staff to get clarity and other supporters and staff. What we don't have is that same thing for our constituents. And so this item was intended to really, you know, recognize that I, from the start, I realized that there was something inherently flawed, um, which didn't get better, you know, with the pandemic and distancing. There was something inherently flawed with, um, our community and constituent engagement. Um, I believe that each of our districts are unique and should reserve the opportunity to really customize our outreach, but I also believe that there's something being left behind when we don't take like a really robust opportunity to engage with district constituents. Um, there not being a standard sort of universal unilateral, this is how we do it. We don't have that, just in case y'all don't know. Each of the individual council districts up here, we all figure out when we're going to do a town hall, when we're going to engage with our constituents, how we do so, whether or not to do a newsletter, what that contains. There's nothing in the way of uniformity, and I think us not having a standard template protocol. CPIO, that's the, those are the people that help us put out information from the city. Their job is to do X, Y, Z. I think a part of that, and not to increase their workload, certainly not without exploring what it looks like to increase supports for them, but I think all council members should be releasing their newsletters with the same cadence, the same frequency, the same or similar content aside from what's uniform to your district. I think town halls, especially in the beginning, I came in here so optimistic that we all wanted to make everything better and be nice to each other, until I got yelled at and somebody threw something at me. Turn it up! There are some folks who don't necessarily think democracy doesn't have to be ugly. They absolutely take every opportunity to just throw bombs and start stuff. That was another word I was going to use on my mouth. And so I say that to say, I think if we made it uniform and don't make it a town hall where the formula is, you guys all sit out there, I sit up on a stage, and you scream at me and over one another to the point where nothing actually happened here. We just wasted an hour and a half on Thursday night for no reason. My show is on. Why are we here? We're not going to actually do something. So that said, I hope that the city with so many more resources, that's another thing to take into consideration, I know I'm going along, but it's important. With so few resources as council offices, we have small staff, a limited budget, and limited capacity. It's not an appropriate expectation for all of us to, in addition, figure out how to answer your public information requests and answer your calls and answer your emails and be, you know, really conscientious about digging into the agenda and all the, we can't do all of that and, in addition, to plan town hall meetings and plan opportunities to meet with y'all individually. I have over a hundred neighborhood associations in my forty-six square miles that I represent, but every single one of those neighborhood associations wants to meet with me once a week. It can't happen, and there's not enough capacity. So what I'm asking is for the city to help us figure out how to be more present. I don't think it's appropriate that y'all don't have more access to us, but there's just not enough to go around when you're one human with ninety-seven thousand people that you represent, and it's just too few opportunities to address them where people's ideological position is the same, in which case, there's no back and forth. There's always back and forth in democracy, but we can't go back and forth to the detriment of people who sit quietly in the back of the room and never get their questions answered. We can't do so at the risk of asking, "People need childcare." These events that I'm talking about provide childcare and food and age-appropriate entertainment, and make this actually fun. Don't lie to me, y'all. Town halls are not fun. You're either the one yelling, the one didn't yell that, or the one listening to the person getting yelled at, and your questions never get answered. That's not what it's supposed to do. It's supposed to be an opportunity for us to exchange information, for you to contribute to the process, for us to actually listen to you, and for something to get done in a way that we collaboratively move together. So that was the point of this item, and it's actually one in a series of items that make City Hall more accessible. We should be doing more tours of City Hall. I've called it snacks, students who are looking for, exactly what the acronym was, but essentially it's like, people need to come to City Hall. Everybody isn't even recognized. It's because y'all's building. You pay for it. You, you, it's your tax dollars. That cover everything that happens inside this building, but not being familiar with how it works, the language is, what the terminology is. There's a lot that we're losing because we're not doing this as a, us and y'all together doing it. It's us up here behind the bulletproof days and you down there, and that's not how good collaborative effort works. We've got to figure out a way to work better together. Um, how we deal with this, um, one of the things that I see as a top priority is us moving through, um, with some degree of humanity in every exchange that we have with one another. I'm not strategic to get messed up, so I'm not scared of it. But my hope is that we can actually get something done and talk to each other. So when we have these meetings like this where ideologically we're not all aligned, I, I, you don't need me to be maternalistic about it, but I, I really do. So as the parent of a trans kid, my ninth grader is at McCallum High School watching us and listening to us and how we talk to one another. And I'm And I most especially want to post this to the people who proclaim to be advocates for the best interest of children, they're watching YouTube. I want everybody to recognize that we don't have to be the same, that diversity and humanity is a part of the beauty of it, and we all get to have our own opinions. But when it comes to a situation like this, this room, those kids watching us, how do we encourage them to become policymakers of the future if you're so terrified that you can't sit up here and just, "I'm just your neighbor Natasha." That's it! I have neighbors who don't speak to me because of my job, who walk past my house and won't look at me. I'm just your neighbor Natasha. That's it! We don't have to be ugly to each other, and I'm really, I can't put enough emphasis on it, especially as a person who deals with mental health issues like so many others. This is the last thing you need adding to that. Public discourse shouldn't be the reason that you have an anxiety attack today. Y'all, kindness is free. Don't agree with me, so be it, but don't be ugly, and don't you ever do it in the name of my Father God. Please, I'll end with this, I'd like to acknowledge and express my gratitude for our outgoing interim city manager. He took on something voiding me ever. He came in and took on a hugely important task. We asked him to do something that was big, and he answered the mighty call with zeal. I'd like to thank him for his leadership and commitment to the ability to really seamlessly carry us through this transition, and I'd say we are indebted to his tireless effort. And so on behalf of myself and Team D One and all of District One, we wish you a happy retirement and welcome, our new city manager, as he's coming on with us next meeting. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate the praise.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Allison Alter, and then I want to recognize Councilwoman Bella.
Thank you. First of all, thank you to everyone who came and spent the day with us here. It was really good to hear your voices and your passion. It's better to hear you and to take our votes accordingly. I want to talk about something totally different, though, at the moment. I want to highlight Dr. Wachs and Dr. Esq., as well as the District Ten constituent, Dr. Lauren Myers, who is the principal investigator for the project we have before us in item fifty-four. I want to extend my congratulations to Dr. Myers as the, as the principal investigator on the larger award for a pandemic preparedness center. This is going to be the nation's first national network for outbreak response and disease forepassing, and it's going to be housed right here in Austin at UT. I want to thank Austin Public Health and ACMO for their terrific work that has culminated in this accomplishment. This work is going to help ensure that our community is poised to respond to disease outbreaks as efficiently and effectively as possible. I also want to speak to item nine to three, launching an Austin poet laureate program. I'm very, very excited to see this item move forward. I believe that poetry adds humanity, poetry can set the scene and alter the course of conversations. Poetry enriches. I do, however, want to acknowledge that Austin does have a youth poet laureate. As many of you know, my son was chosen as the youth poet laureate in the fall of twenty twenty-two, and I got to participate in and enjoy the way that poetry added to many events and in which the experience of the students who benefited from the programming as part of the laureate cohort or as part of the group that they reached out to. The youth poet laureate program will be a wonderful partner for the Austin poet laureate program, and I trust that the library will work with them. My son is now a freshman at Yale and in the middle of finals, otherwise I would have asked him to share a poem with us today. Mayor, thank you for your, your little poem, I think. We needed a little poetry today. In twenty twenty-three, though, through the course of his time as an Austin youth poet laureate, I did speak with the state poet laureate about this, so I'm really thrilled that Councilmember Fundas and the writers community came forward to make this happen. It was on my bucket list of getting done before I leave, and so I'm very, very excited to be a co-sponsor of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bella, to close.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's an honor to add you as a co-sponsor to item sixty-four. Thank you so much for your support and reverence, Mayor, please. I'm proud to bring forward my office transgender protection resolution today. Thanks to all of the brave people who spoke in support of the measure, especially given the intimidation tactics used by some opponents this morning. Opponents of the measure currently sent armed individuals to intimidate supporters, I'd say, and took to city hall. Very disappointing and troubling. Guns just don't belong at city hall and violence should not be a part of, or even threats of violent should not be a part of our level of discourse. Trans people deserve the right to self-determination. Our state has forced them and their medical providers into hiding, that is wrong. Austin should not be a party to that any more than we equally have to be. Austinites do not prioritize criminal enforcement rules that limit medical decisions made between families and their doctors, whether that's a decision to terminate a pregnancy or how to treat a child struggling with gender dysphoria. Trans people have existed since people have existed and have been present in practically every court. This is a historical fact. I sincerely hope this resolution will provide some small comfort to the trans residents of Austin. We are on your side, we will not support the traveling of your rights, and we are proud and grateful to have you here in Austin with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. There being no further discussion, let me ask if there are anyone wishing to be shown abstaining from any item on the consent agenda? Anyone wishing to be shown recusing themselves from a vote on the consent agenda? I have Councilmember Kelly being shown voting no on item sixty-four. Are there any other no votes that a council member would like to be shown voting no? In that case, without objection, the consent agenda is adopted with Councilmember Kelly being shown voting no on item sixty-four. Thank you, councilmembers. Now what we will do is we will take up items four, five, and six. Excuse me. What I would ask is that, what I would ask is that our professional staff come forward and make a brief presentation regarding items four, five, and six, and then I'll recognize council question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor for telling councilmembers. My name is Shay Rollson, and I'm the director of Austin Water. And I appreciate your consideration today of items on your agenda for the water conservation plan, drought contingency plan updates, and the co-changes for those updates. I'd like to start by assuring all of our stakeholders that Austin Water is committed to water conservation. Our highest value water is water we don't use, and as we convey to city council in the recent recent water requirements, our community can
Isn't that him, Lawton? I think Carter and that's killed somebody.
I think they just did.
That's it? Yeah, it's done. Except for Mackenzie Kelly, your friend.
Yeah, Mackenzie Kelly.
Y'all are on the same team, though.
F her. F Mackenzie Kelly.
So Natasha Harper Madison talking out both sides of her head, it's interesting.
She was just going on about
We should have the rights to like, and then she totally like said that she didn't care what anybody said. Remember?
Yeah.
They're all fake, they're all fash. They're all fash. Anyway, so the armed gunmen out here, the security was not welcomed by city hall staff, even though they got like three levels of security here, they got armed gunmen all over the place. That was interesting. That was real interesting.
It was the Bible.
It was the Bible? Okay, well, start, start doing all the stuff in Old Testament, let's slaughter a fucking sheep right here for God.
Yeah.
Anyways, we'll see you later, guys. They voted, they, you know, they passed the agenda item sixty-four, which was
Sanctuary City for Trans.
Sanctuary City for Trans people. It wasn't even about kids, but the Bible thumpers came in and made it all about kids. And then they told a bunch of stuff that was apparently a falsehood. But they needed armed security here, you met them earlier on the previous livestream. Talk to you later.